To be held at the Community Centre, Bullyshaw Road, Hemsworth, on Thursday, 19th of May, 2022, at 7pm. In accordance with the requirements of the Local Government Act 1972, the Town Council is required to hold the Town Council meeting, which can be attended by local leaders who reside within Hemsworth, Fitzwilliam and Kinsley. The meeting will be chaired by the Chairman of the Town Council and the agenda is as follows. So we'll go to item number one to confirm the minutes of the annual Town Council meeting held on 26th of May, 2021. Have we got a mover and a seconder?
Is there a mover, John?
Yeah. Are we all in favour?
Yeah, in favour, yeah.
Right, we'll go on to... Yeah. So we'll move to item two, Chairman of the Town Council's report. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for attending this annual Town Council meeting. It's an honour for me to be the first female Chairperson of Hemsworth. Many more females to come over the next coming years. Progressing with our Hemsworth Town Council meetings, I would respectfully ask that we treat each other with respect. I would like to see an improvement in communication between councillors and the public. Going forward, I will be limiting any question time allocated to 15 minutes so we can progress with council business. These are council meetings for councillors, not for the public. But if the public, if the public would like to stay and have a meeting after, they're more than welcome to do so. You know, for an extra half hour, whichever. Any person wanting to ask questions during question time should put their hand up and notify us of their name for the town clerk to make a note in case we are unable to answer your question and then the town clerk can follow it up. I would propose that all council meetings be recorded for transparency. As the new Chair, I would like to thank all the Hemsworth Town Council staff for their efforts during their time and wish all members of staff a good rest of the year. Can I request that members of the public enjoy our services and be kind to our hardworking staff? Hemsworth Town Council will not tolerate poor behaviour against any members of staff. It's a special year this year with the Queen's Jubilee and I would personally like to express my gratitude to our wonderful Queen Elizabeth and want everyone to enjoy the celebrations and enjoy the Jubilee weekend. I'm keen to start a young persons group where they could inform councils of local issues and do, that do and could affect them. And we understand the different needs of local people and for the group to report back to the annual, the Town Council meetings to be arranged also and can contact our district councils and try to, for them to try to attend the Town Council meeting so they can report what they have been doing in the area. The up and coming events, which I'm going to go through, because this is what's going to be happening and this is what mostly has been happening. So we've got the Hemsworth Community Centre, we've got the Free Legal Advice Services, Citizens Advice Services and Seniors Citizens Keep Fit. Obviously, we have the, we also have the Fitzwilliam Community Centre. We've got football facilities, Severnham Road, Sandy Gate, Hemsworth Water Park and Playworld, Lakeside, Caffey Bar, various events happening for kids, Easter, Halloween, et cetera. One Bank Street, obviously free rent for Dr Jackson's charity. We have allotments, we have Bonfire Night, we have three brass band concerts, we also have a gardening scheme. We've got grants, we have a seaside event, Christmas lights which are, we have pantomimes, we do have them in Fitzwilliam and Hemsworth. We have a Christmas float around the parish, we have Christmas trees and extra Christmas lights and we have the seaside trips to come in the summer. The balances to date, the Barclays account has £484,970. In the deposit fund, there's £230,000. The property fund is £237,000. That's a total of £951,970. And also in September, we have a second payment, second half of the preset and will receive a further £384,193. This council has kept the preset the same for the last three years and long may that last. So that's the end of my report. So now, item three matters raised from the floor. Can you give your name?
Paul Stevens.
Yeah.
Right, you know when you do meetings and it's close to the public and press and a member comes out and discusses it straight away with a member of the public? When I was taught, you had a private meeting, it stopped within that meeting, you don't discuss it with anybody else, public or anywhere. So why was it discussed with a member of the public straight after that meeting last week by a councillor?
Well, I don't know about that. Alan, can you elaborate on that?
All I can say is some complaints have been received.
Yes.
This isn't the forum to discuss them in detail.
Right.
If you have a complaint about a councillor, you can send that to me.
Yes.
As town clerk, I'm limited in what I can do. It's pretty much limited to advice and quiet word. In terms of any sanction, then I would advise you to report it to Wakefield Council to the monitoring officer.
That's what I will do then.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, we all have noted that, yeah.
Is there any other questions? Lyn.
Lyn Morton. Not actually on my own behalf, but I've had a couple of questions in from residents who can't make it tonight and asked if I'd ask. One resident would like to know if you've made any progress finding somebody to restart the Sunday dinners? It's all right, I don't need that, I'll just speak up.
Sorry.
Okay, I'll speak up, sorry, sorry, I'll speak up. I've had a resident contact me asking if you've made any progress in finding someone else to deliver the Sunday dinners.
As I do believe, not as yet, but I think we're on with that.
Well, we're going to hopefully advertise something soon, but no volunteers have yet contacted me anyway, unfortunately.
Okay, cool. And the second question is, sorry, second question is from a resident in Southindley who's become aware today of a potential traveller camp that's being proposed in Southindley as part of the consultation that's going on with the local plan and everything. And he hasn't looked into it in detail himself yet, so he's not sure exactly what's going on. But he's asking, will Hemsworth Town Council look into this and raise an objection to it on behalf of the residents of Southindley?
Those details came out today from Wakefield Council.
I was just going to say.
I got the same email, but it was just that the resident wanted me to raise it with you and ask you to consider raising an objection.
Just to be a pedant for a moment, it's Southindley, not the parish, but the Town Council can comment on it if it wishes. I checked the dates this morning, I think we have got a policy meeting prior to the deadline, so it could be adjourned then and if the council wants to comment, it can do.
Okay.
So I like.
Yeah, that's brilliant, thanks very much.
The lady at the back.
Thank you, my good friend. So my question is, I don't think you've seen BBC News today? Anyone there?
Well, I might, if you tell me what it is, I could have.
So Scope have been on the BBC news and it's about accessible play equipment for children and for people such as swings, roundabouts, seesaws. So my question is, it keeps getting raised in council meetings about having a lift so that people can access upstairs for funeral cheese, weddings, et cetera, which, yes, I agree with, they do need to access things like that. But then if you look at the amount of children who actually use our park down the lakeside, going there, going to Playworld and there is one piece of equipment, accessible equipment. Scope found it would call on 1,000 people, parents of children with different disabilities and one in seven parents have said their children feel really disappointed, really upset. They can't play with their siblings, they can't experience what other children experience. So my question is, the lift is important to some people, I agree, and I agree it needs to be. The priority down there is to make Playworld accessible for people who have disabilities, whether they're in a wheelchair or a seat like the Century Garden in there. So I would like you as a council to look at putting some play equipment in there, a swing, a seesaw, a roundabout. They are a bit costly, but then what's that compared to child happiness? And we get a lot of people down in that park. So my question is, you know, is that achievable this year, this summer?
Well, we certainly have a look at that and I'm sure Alan can put it on the next available agenda to be discussed.
So the car park as well, thinking a couple of council meetings not too long back, and you try pushing a wheelchair around that car park, getting someone out and bringing them round. It's virtually impossible, it only checks the ground. So basically, you've got all that grid, I think it's Sandy Gate or the other one, I've got, I've got names up the top, it's a mess. But there's all that grid up there. So what do you think, it was said by the last chairman that we were going to repeat sort of moving to that down there and making that car park more accessible and better for people? Pushchairs, wheelchairs, people who have formability, people with sight impaired, right off the line, and trying to walk around that car park, nightmare, nightmare. So I think we really need to think about it because we could be having a bit of a lay on the bench during some nice accident there.
I understand what you're saying and that car park has been like that for a very, very long time. But moving forward, we can put it on the agenda. I'm not sure about the grid, but I'm no expert on this. I think to combat wheelchairs getting round anywhere is tarmac. I'm not, I don't know. Obviously, we'll put it on the next agenda and we'll discuss it and see where that brings us.
I think you can speak to someone who is pushing a wheelchair, you know, quite a lot and see what they think about it, what they need in that.
Yeah, I mean, I know they did try the grid on the paths, but I think that, if I'm not mistaken, because I walked around the park myself and obviously that grid has just moved and moved away from the steps till you can't even get up, we know this is a priority. And hopefully, with the balances that we've got, hopefully we can find some money for that, I think it's important. So yes, we'll be putting it on the agenda and we will be talking about that.
So will it be moving forward, not like the accessible play stuff? Where I appreciate you can look in Twitter, there is a process to go through, but will it be pushed on that, so like next year and asking the same question?
Well, hopefully not, but it's a council decision, so we have to take it to council to make the decision. That is how it works. And then it's up to councils and then it's up to councils to find that money and obviously with the clerk's help on that. So hopefully we can do something, you know.
I really hope so.
Yeah.
Children, children listen out, thank you.
Yeah.
We should be able to, someone, someone always should try to argue this, though.
Yes, can I be nice, please?
Kelly Conway, Fitzwilliam. I'd just like to ask you a question on cronyism. Obviously, the last three years have been aligned with mismanagement and this like other, in blatant acts of cronyism, of which yourself you'll receive financial benefit from that. And it's just, it's funny now, since mentioning that car park needed money and we've just spent £4,000, when I say us, the preset payers, on a car park that was not even ours. So I'm just wondering, like, you know, where do you stand on cronyism? Is that going to stop or will you be actually looking to pay some back? And also, secondly, I was just asked by Mr Draper, Mr Kenyon, volunteered to go onto a meeting to represent the people of Hemsworth on the LS21 or whatever it was, meeting and didn't turn up, knowing quite clearly it was a select few and on the, you know, a few were, luckily, we had a member who turned up and because these two didn't get turned up, they actually got into representatives. But I don't want to know why they didn't go, I want to know why they volunteered to go. Because like I said, they knew full well it was a select few who could only go to represent the people of Hemsworth. So by them two saying, yeah, we'll go, you know, for the fact that two more wouldn't go because they wouldn't be able to get in, luckily it did turn out that way. So I'm not interested why they didn't go, I'm just interested in why they wanted to go. Because this time they can't say they didn't get any emails or they can't blame it on what is it, the last lot? Because a blind man in a galloping horse could see or a select committee and there aren't so many seats available. So not, you know, to say we're going, that took up those two seats to represent the people of Hemsworth, yet they didn't turn up, knowing full well that Hemsworth then wouldn't be represented. So like I said, I'm not interested why they didn't turn up, I'm interested in why they volunteered to go, knowing full well that two who would have gone couldn't go because they'd already booked the seats.
Oh, I got it.
Mr Conway, I can speak for myself but nobody else. I didn't volunteer to go. I was aware of it and I messaged, emailed all the councils if they wanted to go. I didn't volunteer to go. I wasn't aware that a place had been booked for me and I have proof of that, but I can only speak for myself, though.
Who booked it for you? Can just come through, Chair, please. Alan, who was, obviously, who was the other?
Well, there was myself and councillor Kenyon who used to go, but I didn't book it. So.
Right, can I just respond to Mr Conway's first comment? First of all, anyone that, anyone that's got allegations or can prove any financial benefits, whoever it is can contact the police and that's what I would do. I don't know if you've received an email from the, from the town clerk or not regarding this because I know you've been very vocal about it.
I have, yes, I have, of course.
Well, with, with respect, and I'm saying it here and now, I have had no financial gain of the thousands of pounds that you've accused me of from this council. I'm really, I'm insulted and upset, really. Because, you know, talking to anybody else at that, to that volume and that magnitude that you're on about, I really do feel hurt and offended because I have actually helped the community, regardless of what you want to keep putting on Facebook. But the town clerk will advise you what to do and will give you any information you need regarding finances. And we've also got the district auditor to look at where these thousands of pounds have gone. And then I think, obviously, you should apologize, Mr Conway, because I know for a fact, 100%, there's been no financial gain for myself.
Whose name is it? And it's not in our name, it's not in the town council's name, is it?
What are you talking about, Mr Conway?
The car park, the car park, Mr Draper told me it cost £4,000.
Right.
And in return, we've got £208,000.
No, you did not.
Well, I'm sorry, that went on information from Mr Draper again.
Well, I mentioned it at the last meeting, Mr Conway, that the, on Bonfire Night, you're right, there were £280 collected. It was a powder car and then the fair was supposed to be on Town Council land, on the car park, on the overspill car park. The car park got waterlogged, took us paid £800 to this council and then they had to move it. So Gordon and myself accommodated them and also Gordon did say that the £800 would stay with the Town Council. So we, obviously, they used the facility, they used it for the fair and up to now, £1,080 has been put into the Town Council.
Sorry, Alan, what did you put in your head?
Just £1,080 for the Town Council. And the events that we did agree to for the, to the Town Council was that, I'm going to mention it, I know it's a thing, but I'm going to mention it anyway. It was for the Wenger Boys Overspill, it was for the bonfire, bonfire and the seaside event, which we did that as well because we get a lot, a lot of businesses along the road, they're getting blocked in, so it does help. I don't know how more, what I've got to say to you because you keep coming back with the same things. And I'm telling you now.
Well, I'm telling you now, because to a deputy, a £2,800.
Well, with this, there's still the Bonfire Night, there's still the seaside event. I mean, if you'd like to, you could always propose that we charge on Bonfire Night again and on the seaside event. We do get people from outer area, I'm not against that because we do, people that live locally, that this facility is from, often walk. So I don't, I don't, I don't think it's unfair to, to charge, to get some money back, but it has been there through the summer as well for the Town Council.
Modern Chair. Situation, lift. I have begged the council many, many times, put a lift, put a lift, we need it for funerals, we need it for weddings, I can go on and on, but nobody will take no notice. Right, we need a lift.
Yes.
And I'm talking to all here, that water park wants a lift. We can't be sending people away with a funeral elsewhere. They should come to the water park, right?
If they want to.
If they want to, that's right. You know?
Right.
I find it amazing to me, honestly, I do.
Well, obviously, it's been, the, the lift is, it's up and coming and also what we've just been saying about disabled children.
That's right.
That's also, because that is the same. So with, you know, we don't need it, so, you know, we'll have it on the agenda and we'll be discussed.
I take it there's a bit of disability which will be in the business part for it then, yeah? For what? For the lift?
Can you come through, Chair, if you put your hand up? The people with their hands up.
Yeah, I'm going to you now, I'll take it then.
No, I'm going to go to the gentleman behind because he's had his hand up, thank you.
Aye, fair enough.
My name is Mr Ray, 11 Caffey Road. I worked on that water park when it was built in, god, 80s. That car park is exactly the same, nothing's been done to it. It's run down, it looks a mess. And I know because I worked on it, so I know everything that went into it. I worked on all that and to me, it's still the same. It's been underinvested, it needs some money put into it to bring it up, because it doesn't, it looks a mess.
Thank you, that is just what I've said, it has had no attention at all.
It's had no investment, really.
Lady at the back.
I don't disagree with councillor Eales. As long as there's a business plan done for having a lift put in there for people to access it. I mean, one of my ideas would be to open that up when upstairs, or when you said people don't like the sound of children running around downstairs, they just want a quiet drink, well, open it upstairs. So I don't disagree with the lift, Gordon.
Yeah.
It's just that I feel desperately that there are more children at this minute who need that and have been over years so that we can be inclusive for children.
I can understand that.
Yeah, every park needs it, to be honest. Every single park in every area needs these play areas. It's just unfair.
Yeah, this is what we're talking about, equal opportunities. Children come into that as well, disabled people come into that. This is what we need to promote, be promoting.
We're doing the night protectin' characteristics, yeah?
Right, Mr Kenyon, did you have your name up?
Yes, sir, modern Chair, regarding the car park, it's a legacy that has been adopted by certain different councils over the years, there's been lack of maintenance on this for years. The other stumbling block, which I think the town clerk will agree with this, that car park, the land belongs to Wakefield Council.
Which, which car park, the water park?
We're talking about the green space which is grassed.
Is that where it's at?
No, the long.
No, he's talking about water park, car park.
Lakeside cafes, is that?
It belongs to Wakefield Council, it's registered to them, yeah.
Well, I never knew that.
Why is, can't understand that if it's, it's in water park?
It still belongs to Wakefield.
Right, Alan, can.
Access to all water, that's what it is.
Can we get on to Wakefield then?
Could I see proof of that then?
Can you just move order, please? Yeah, can you put your hand up, I will respond to you. I've just asked the town clerk, can we get in touch with Wakefield Met and let them come down and have a look at this car park? Right, yeah.
I'm just a bit puzzled that you're saying it belongs to Wakefield when it's in water park, I'm saying, I just don't understand that when it's been.
Well, I thought you were referring to the grass, the, the.
I'm referring to the main car park.
But I didn't even know that, so I'd learnt something because I didn't know that.
I think a lot of people of Hemsworth have learnt something here this year.
Yeah.
If that's the case, then they should have been hundreds of years ago to put it right, Wakefield.
Come on, some order, please, you lads, just there, please. Oh, you're talking, because I can hear from here.
Right, Maxine.
So if it belongs to Wakefield, why have you blocked it off with gates? I don't, I don't understand, that part of it was ours, that's why you blocked it off?
It isn't, it's registered to Wakefield, exactly the same as one of them, the land is registered to Wakefield.
Right, so can we get to the bottom of this, Alan? Alan will be contacting Wakefield Met and asking them to upgrade the car park. Is there any more questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's just a practical issue for me. I wondered whether you'd give some consideration to putting desk mics at the council meeting, desk mics all around in front of the councils so that we can hear their arguments because although the mic goes to the audience or the participant chair, the councils don't always get the mic and it's difficult for the public to follow the arguments. And if you can't follow the arguments, which way are we supposed to consider this? A few desk mics on the tables there would allow us to hear what's going on. And the councils are having a little bit of a chat among themselves, we can hear that as well.
I think what we've got in place at the minute is obviously the Chairperson speaking. We've got Scott coming round with a mic, I think. How many mics have we got, Alan?
Only two on this table.
So we only have two. Well, maybe we can get two spare extra mics and can we accommodate that on the system that we've got? No, so we'd have to renew system and mics.
It's just that we can't, we never can hear Mr Draper's answer.
Yeah, no, I take his point, it's a valid point. So other than Scott going, is everybody happy that Scott goes round with the mic? That we have three microphones on this table?
Two.
Yeah, I'm coming to him in a minute. Alan, yeah.
Mrs Chair, could I just ask Alan Draper, who actually booked him onto this farming meeting? If he didn't book himself or?
I don't know, it wasn't me.
Any more questions?
Then if you are.
Can you come through, Chair, please?
Somebody must, oh, sorry.
You know, if we're going to, this is how, as, as the new Chair, this is how I want to, so everybody gets a chance and we don't get into arguments between ourselves. I want it to be run properly as it should be done, so, yeah.
Fairly. If you're. If, somebody has to be responsible, somebody's got to take responsibility to book these meetings, otherwise you're going to look idiots if it, if. Somebody has to do it.
I can only ask Alan to make inquiries as to who booked, um.
But Mr Draper's the clerk, so somebody, somebody has to take responsibility. They have to do it.
Somebody's booked him on it.
Yeah.
And that's. Cathy. So, uh, Cathy Thornhill, so can you put that on to the agenda for the next council meeting? So that we do actually find out what actually happened regarding that meeting last Friday, so that.
Last Friday?
Yes, but Friday just gone.
There were an housing, there were an housing meeting last Friday?
Yeah, to, to, to discuss.
Can you come to order, please, Sir councillor Kenyon?
LP one five one one.
Can you, can you stop talking amongst yourselves, please, come through, Chair?
You know, it's, two places were booked, obviously. I didn't know it involved Mr Draper. You, you've obviously said it involved Mr Kenyon. Neither of them appealed.
I've just asked the clerk to find out the details.
So can we put it on the agenda for the next meeting and report back as to what happened? I've got a question about the LP one five one one. Obviously, in the meeting that you had had with Neville Ford, it was said to everybody. And Mr Faletti and his wife sent letters out. And after the meeting, they put it on social media to write in to Mr Draper about any concerns about LP one five one one and that you would include it in the council's objection to Wakefield. I've actually looked at Mr Draper's objection and he only references the people that were in this meeting. He doesn't reference about how many people actually wrote in. You only reference sixty people that wrote in. How ma, uh, how many pe, sixty people that attended the meeting. You haven't referenced how many people wrote in to you.
Apologies for referencing, but their comments were included.
But me reading that says that there's only sixty people objecting, which I would imagine from what's been said again on social media, there was a lot more people that contacted you than sixty.
There were sixty people roughly in the room of the meeting.
Yeah.
Um, so the comments were taken on board and part of the submission. Then there were people overnight, because the deadline was quite tight, the day after the deadline, or two days later. Then overnight, roughly from memory, there'd be about twenty emails coming overnight. And every email that came in, I, I took on board their comments, added them to submission. Lots of them were overlap, the same sort of valid points. And every single one of them, at the same time, I replied, like, as you see, I advise them to also send a separate email to Wakefield Council.
And that is something that I raised at that meeting and said that in a way, by asking everybody to go through Alan, you were actually misleading them, you should have actually been advising them to go online and register it because ev, and, and councillor, uh, Melanie Jones mentioned this Thursday, last Thursday's meeting, that it isn't about, it's all about numbers. So really, you know, what I'm saying is, by you putting sixty people were at the meeting, you should have actually said and included how many people have wrote in to you. I think we all just need to learn from this.
I'll just try and reply to that question earlier on. When you stated that myself and, uh, Alan Draper didn't turn up to a meeting, I thought you were referring to the meeting in May whereby we, we couldn't make representation at that meeting for the Woodlands. If you were on about last Friday, then two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, I received an email from, uh, the department that runs it, Certain Housing. Whether it's to do with, I don't, I don't think it were to do with, with LDF or to, to the PP, uh, one two one on Woodlands. And what it basically stated were the type of accommodations that were going to be discussed, that they wanted. Social housing, affordable housing and different other things. On Thursday, I, I will say this about two weeks ago, that when the lady said, would you like to go? And it were me that said, yeah, put two places down for me and, uh, town clerk, if we can make it. On Wednesday or Thursday then last week, I asked Alan if he would be able to make it. And he says, I've no chance because he's got a pile of work on too much. And I've got an appointment that, that I had to attend. And I emailed that lady saying that we wouldn't be attending. In the conversation with Alan Draper on the Wednesday or Thursday, he did say that another council were attending. So obviously, we, we took it at that. But that, that is, I, I understand what you mean now, what I, yeah.
Sorry, councillor. Mr Jim, can you say that Mr Draper said that somebody else was taking it on or where did the email come from to say another council were going?
Alan, Alan referred to me that, you know, me and him couldn't go.
So Alan's told you that another council was going?
No, he just mentioned that, that, that a certain coun, another, another council were going anywhere.
Could he, Mr Draper, could you confirm which council tells you those are going?
No.
Well, I can't.
It's not really my place to say who, who else was there. If he or she wants to say that, that's up to him or her.
It is the town clerk, Mr Draper, it is your place for the community.
Jordan, can, can you put your hand up and come through, Chair, please? Do you, do you want, do you want, uh, to ask a question, Jordan?
It is Mr Draper's place to let the community know exactly what is going on. We were all present at Monday's meeting. We were all present at Thursday's meeting when all the Highfield people were here. And Mr Kenyon, we're back here one hundred percent. Mr Faletti, is he here tonight?
No.
We're back here one hundred percent. The day after on the Friday, the meeting you'd both been proposed to go to, you don't turn up. How is that supporting and backing the community? It's not at all. So keep saying you don't want to know. I don't want to know why you didn't turn up.
I, I, I'm going to talk to the, uh, town clerk.
First of all, the meeting was about, I think, the local plan or housing generally, but specifically about this site. The email request came, I think, a couple of weeks ago. I sent it out to all my councillors. Uh, one councillor made her own arrangements to go there. And I never volunteered to go to it, I didn't have the time. If it had been specifically about Hensworth, I would have done, but it wasn't specifically about Hensworth. It was about Wakefield's housing strategy in general. So I never volunteered to go. I found out on the afternoon that a bucket had been done for me. So short of inventing a time machine, there was nothing I could do.
Thank you for that, Alan.
Mr Kenyon, you just said he, he let him know that government couldn't attend.
Can he come through, Chair, please? These are the people that have got their hands on, um. Maxine.
Right, just to put things straight, um, we did get the email of Alan. Um, I did ask Alan if I could go. Alan, uh, Alan said he emailed Janet Howie at Housing. Um, Janet came back with the places have already been taken, so I went to Denise Jeffries and said, can you just squeeze me on it? Uh, it was about all the plannings, it wasn't just Hensworth. But I was, um, questioned. They asked me what all y'all felt about what was happening and they asked us what, what, what we thought was going to happen. And, and it, Janet Howie actually was quite good at telling, telling me what, explaining to me what was being booked. But to say, I will, I will tell you that Alan did not know about that meeting. Because I have got the emails from him and Janet Howie. So I, I am not speaking up for anybody, but it, it, it is to me quite enviable, but. But we did, we did speak about Hensworth. Janet Howie did ask me questions and, and I caught everybody's points of view. Well, and, and I've actually had another email as well from her, so we'll just, like, see what we've got from there.
You've actually said, it's about, Mr Kenyon's just said, it's about type of housing.
Speaking of housing.
Yes, just talking about housing. But, and Mr Draper said it wasn't just about Wa, uh, about Hensworth, it was for all of Wakefield. Surely, doesn't that tell you that you shouldn't have been there? You shouldn't just be in your little bubble about Hensworth. You should be going to all of these meetings. We keep, we keep having these council meetings and all that keeps coming back to members of the public, oh, we didn't know, oh, we didn't know. I didn't read, I didn't read an email. Come on, be proactive instead of reactive. You're supposed to be representing us. And all we're doing at the moment is firefighting. Come on, get with the programme. If you'd have gone to this meeting, you might know things.
We have, we have, uh, Wakefield Met councillors, three of them. And this is something that I wanted to work with the town council, the, um, Wakefield Met councillors. But they get to know everything and anything about this district and they represent us. We do the normal day-to-day running of the facilities that we, would, would be public use in, um, Hensworth, uh, Fitzwilliam, Kingsley, South England. They're the people that should be coming to these meetings, which we've seen very little of them. And except for Melanie Jones, she came last week, all credit due to her. But we should have been seeing our councillors. I, as a Wakefield Met councillor in two, uh, two thousand and nine, I went to every town, Upton Town Council meeting. Don't quote me on that, maybe not everyone because some people get ill, you know, we're, we're not, we're the same as everybody else. Mine had just had about Jane Faletti as well. He's ill at the moment, and I'm not going to go into that, and that's why he didn't attend. But I re, I went to, uh, town council meetings and I reported what I've been doing and what I know from Wakefield. So if there were a scrutiny committee and things were discussed, which I can discuss, I used to report that back. If there was something happening in the area or it was in combination with, um, my ward, I reported that. Every meeting that I went to, I reported. And that's what our town couns, our Hensworth, um, Wakefield Town, uh, councillors should be doing. They should be coming here, so you, you, you're telling, you're telling us and, and, and all right. And if we, if we can do something, we will. But they're the ones that can really pump the thumbs down. They're the ones that can sort it out. It takes one phone call because I've done it. So these, I want to see, um, Wakefield Met councillors at our, um, at our full town council meetings to report. And if they've got nothing to report, as you don't sometimes, you say I've nothing to report, but you're there at the meeting. And that is a big thing to me. So that's what should be happening. Just a minute. That's what should be happening. So, um, I, I, I think somebody else has put their hand up, but.
Well, I just wanted to reply to your, your question. You were answering my question, so I'm replying to yours.
Yeah, well, you can.
You, you've obviously just said that's what you did in whatever year. I wouldn't have just thought, right, well, I'm no longer elected to do that. I would have been actively still involved at looking what's happening in my area. I wouldn't have just thought, oh, I'm no longer elected. I'll forget it. You're, you're a councillor.
Excuse me, that, we're in a different, uh, well, um, in Upton anyway. It wasn't in Hensworth. But you'll find I do contribute and I did say about the objections, which councillors will agree, that I did say you have to, uh, individually make, um, your, um.
Objection.
Objections, so.
But we didn't, you did it through Alan.
We did it, yes, we did it through Alan because if I remember, um, what was his name, um.
Neville Ford.
Yeah, Neville Ford. He said that through the clerk as a council, it would be, it, it would have some clout, if you like. And that's why, and, and bear in mind, it was the day before, which I think is outrageous because I think, you know, at the eleventh hour, as people quote, is that's totally wrong. And for us to get objections in, the clerk was straight on it. He took the notes that night, he was straight on it the next day. He sent emails to councillors. We all replied to them, well, I certainly did, I replied to that. But moving forward, this is what I want to happen. I want to work with the, uh, local councillors. I want to see them at meetings. I want to do changes. I think I've said it in my, I mean, nobody's asked me about, you know, um, what my priori, my priorities is. And I, and I've just, and I did write something down and I'll just say what my priorities is. And it, it, it's, it is about local council, so, uh, my priorities for this coming year is to help as much as we can towards local, local groups because we're going to have a tough time ahead. And, and also, um, scrutinize Wakefield Council, um, to do more in area and work with our district councils. Um, so we're all on the same page. You know, um, we are normal working people and, like I've said, we do look after the facilities in the area because that's what the town council is, that job is. The, the bigger stuff is your local councillors. And they've got to put their hands up and be a bit responsible for what's happening. And what's happened because they would have known, they would have known, they would have known. Right?
Not true.
No, I'm going to go to, uh, Mr Conway.
Okay, I'll take on board what you said about, uh, Melanie coming, but I know for a fact she's been to two meetings here and she's been subject to abuse and ridicule. Now, if you're saying, you're inciting that you want her to come, I think you ought to make it safe for her to come in a cordial environment, like you just said in your, in your free speech.
Can I just mention, uh, Mr Conway, that this is why I put my speech, you want respect. To councillors, we want respect. To the public, I don't want a public argument to be aired and viewed in front of everybody. That's not the way forward. And this is what change we want, what I, on, on my leadership, want to, want to try and get an orderly house and everybody do what they, you don't get this anywhere. Wakefield, any other meetings, you don't get the arguing and fighting that's been going off and all, obviously through a bogus site.
Can I add to that then? Can I please add to that?
And going back to Melanie Jones, I don't agree with any local councillor or councillor getting abuse from anybody and, and vice versa.
Right, can I come back, can you still answer that then?
Uh, no, I'm going to go to, um.
You want to know the truth, that's what it is.
Uh, yeah.
Sorry, councillor. I just, just wondered what protocol, what, is it down to Mr Draper to book people on meeting? Or is it down to the ex-chair to book people on these meetings?
I think we've just answered that, John, so we're going to go to, uh, back now to, uh, Donna, Donna Brown, councillor.
Yeah, so you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, which I completely agree with Jean, about the, um, respect from both ways. You know, we've had people shouting and this and the other. And we do have, there's a policy, I'm probably going to get it wrong, I will not tell what it is, a bullying, harassment and intimidation policy. I'm just going to ask, are we going to follow that policy?
Well, we certainly are, this is what, this is what I've said in my speech about respect. I did actually miss something off, um, on, on this, you know, but, um, obviously, when we've got meetings, you put your hand up, which I've, you know, I've done today. Uh, attack everybody so we can get everybody to answer, uh, ask a question, so everybody's heard. And the one that, the ecclers, the people that are shouting out, I'm not even going to acknowledge them because if we can't do what we're supposed to do, then why are people here?
So you just touched on the intimidation thing then, so what, what is that process? Because my understanding was that that person would be spoken to and if it happened a second time, that person would be asked not to attend the meetings or not attend to council property. I believe that happened a couple of months. I believe that happened a couple of months back, around the water park. Are we still following that policy or are we following something different now?
No, every, every incident that happens will be investigated, looked at. And if there's any banning or any restricting them to three months, whatever the council decides through the investigation, then that's what will happen.
And will that be done in a timely manner? Sorry.
What are we referring to?
Do we want, do we want to?
Right. Obviously, you know something I don't, so we're gonna leave that for another matter. Can we just all see, if everybody speaks, then there's just no point.
Mr Conway's referred to it as well. I myself sent in a complaint. I was verbally abused in the reception here. And there's people here that are vouching me on that one as well.
Right, so...
You have had that emailed you.
So, right, then I know what you're talking about. Alan, Alan is dealing with that.
All above the round.
Yeah, Alan and myself are dealing with that.
So my question was, can we do this in a timely manner, please?
Well...
Preferably before another meeting.
Definitely before another meeting, yes. Yeah.
How long does it take?
It's a week.
Sorry?
It's a week, isn't it? So we, I emailed the...
So definitely before another meeting, yeah.
Alright, thank you. Oh, last question. Are we gonna get the police representation in the meetings as well? Not only to shout at the rest of the community, but I think recent events. You know, I know you asked for it, Dean, have you had an update on it?
I've asked them, but nothing but yet.
Yeah, Alan has kept me in the loop with that. I mean, I agree with that for all sorts of reasons. But he's had no response. And to be fair, they have pack meetings. So if you need to go to a pack meeting and, you know, your views and that, you can do. But not everybody can get to a pack meeting. But I know some people do attend. So, you know, I might be presuming that they won't come. But we can always ask them. We have done anyway. We're waiting to get back. We're waiting for them to get back.
On that same subject, there's a pack meeting in a couple of weeks, which, yeah. Cathy and I will be going to that.
Yeah, well, can we...
We will raise that with them. But also, there was a community policing event at the water park on Monday. Monday coming?
Yeah.
Monday coming. So if one of the councillors or Alan is available to go down there, you can grab hold of them and say, come on, are you gonna give us an answer?
We will.
I don't know the details of which members of the team are gonna be there, but there will be some of them there, so it's worth a try.
Yeah, and also, obviously, community, we want to have an input. So if yourself and Cathy do go, can you report back to us? You know, and obviously, we'll, we'll get on board what's been said. And then if we've got anything, we, you could be our representatives if there's anything that we need to tell you that, yeah. But hopefully, some councillors can get a tend for. Any more questions? Can you, can you also look, because it is my ears, it's...
I know some dakers. And you clearly stated what you expect from the community. Can I just ask or say what community expects from the councillors? Which is integrity and clarity. It's been shouted all over the place about things being done underhand. People don't know what's going on. People don't know what's being said. And I just think, if we abide by your expectations, then the councillors should abide by the community's expectations.
Yeah, thank you for that. I did say that, I did say that. Respect from both sides is paramount, but obviously...
No, it's just respect, no, it's integrity and clarity.
Well, I think for me, respect is, respect others or respect you. And, you know, that's the package to me. And that's why I did put it in my speech. Mr Conway, I'll come back to you in a minute.
No, I'm not putting my hand up. I've asked loads of questions, I haven't...
I think you are, Mr Conway.
What I will say is, it's a sonic state of deterrence.
You just said you don't want to ask a question.
I want...
Right. And have your names?
My name's David Pringle of the Gansville. I'd just like to ask, does the councillor agree with me that if on the 21st of July 2012, saw construction that had paid the money that it should have done, what, then, do you agree with me that would not have been any interest or any legal payments further from that point on? And the other thing I'd like to say is, I don't want social media, but I like those. So I'd like to ask Mr Conway, am I the English goon or the American version of a goon? And I'd also like to say, last week, when I sat at the bike, Mr Cook was shouting out that you was a liar. I'd like Mr Cook...
That you was a liar.
That you was a liar. I'd like you to repeat that, Mr Cook.
I didn't call Jean a liar, I called you a liar. You called Jean a liar.
Right, can we not have this? Yeah, we're not having this. If you want to respond to that, you can. But if not, we're not gonna get into, into an argument about it. Is there any more questions? Lyn?
Wait, a member of the public's just asked on the, sorry, a member of the public's just asked on the live stream. And you partially answered it because you told us what your personal priorities are, which is great, that partially answered the question. But the resident was wondering what the council's priorities are for the coming year. Have you decided? Is there anything that you can share with the public at the moment as to what you're hoping to concentrate on for the year?
Well, obviously, as the chair, I will be, obviously, promoting my priorities because it's gonna be, it's gonna get tough, isn't it? It's gonna be tougher. And so, obviously, I'm sure, but I can't speak for other councillors, I'm sure that all, I'm presuming that they would agree with me on the priorities. Any more questions? Right, so, yeah, we'll bid you good evening and have a safe journey home. And thank you for coming.